Seven o'clock. We're to call over this really hot, humid Monday, August 8th, 2022. The town of Wakefield Planning Board. I am Tim Straz. John Mayer. He's not here. Terry Ward. Peter. Terry McMenamy.
Here.
Gus Schrat.
Here.
Ed Ingles.
Here.
Rich Zachar.
Here.
Point of alternates, Eddie, would you like to be an alternate?
Sure.
For the board tonight? Excellent. Any public comments? Announcements, correspondence, mail. We received from the New Hampshire DOT, a driveway permit for Tax map 18 lot 20, which is the Simone property, for access on Lyford Road. That was approved. We also received a standard dredge and fill wetlands permit application from Wyatt at 353 Wetworth Road to... Where was it? I believe it's to modify an existing dock, repair an existing bathhouse, no facilities dock, intact structure, adjacent wooden boat launch on the shore of Kingswood Lake. Also, the removal of concrete slabs from the lake bottom. That's it for correspondence. Review and possible approval of minutes from July 11th, 2022. Did everybody get a chance to take note of the minutes?
Yes. I propose that we accept it.
All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes from July 11th, 2022? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Pushing. New business, we had... We were going to talk about home-based businesses last month. We kicked it to this month because there's some members here who would like to chat about it. I don't know if you want to discuss... We originally talked about this as amending or zoning for some kind of provision for home-based businesses. I didn't know if you'd like to talk about that in this meeting? Some more? You have any thoughts?
Well, exactly. It's difficult for our zoning to be all-inclusive. We can never seem to get ahead of it. We put things into the zoning and then we get blindsided from something else coming at us. So a thought would be to have a permit process managed by the selectmen, put that in place. So when someone wants to do something in their home, they can at least have a dialogue. We can ask questions so we can put some restrictions on it. Today, we say all too often, our zoning permits are endless. Because it's not a exhaustive one. So one way we'll tackle it, like, is that make it a permit process and give it to the selectmen. Run to a permit.
Any thoughts from members?
Seems reasonable.
Okay.
And then the selectmen can choose. And, you know, if there's a lot of vehicles coming and going, saying, no, you can't do it. And it's, you know, a service-based business on the internet, like, who cares?
What's going to determine if it needs to be permitted?
Everything.
Everything does?
If it's a home-based business. That's one way to attack it. I mean, that's just a proposal.
How many requests did we get for that? Or have we recently?
We don't have to worry. Yeah. If you look at our zoning and if it's not... If it's not disallowed, do it. And we can't make a list of everything that should be... That we want to consider. I agree with you.
So let's bridge this with the old business item, discuss zoning ordinance list of non-permitted uses. So essentially, I think we were... With that, we were talking about eliminating it. So that way, kind of, you need to have a replacement system. So that would be the permit process. Mr. Schrat, do you have a...
I was going to mention on Mr. Zachar's permit process. It's on... It wouldn't be a matter of deciding what they can do and what they can't do because that's in the zoning. But it's an opportunity to talk to someone who wants to start something and make sure that they're in compliance. As opposed to, you know, there's rules about, you know, any industrious things and equipment, screening it, et cetera, from the street. Setbacks, et cetera. And, you know...
It could give an opportunity for someone who is...
Wants to do a legitimate home-based business but may have intention of setting things up where it would cause slow spots with their neighbors. Whereas they have plenty of land to do something in another spot that would be no impact. So just to talk, okay, what are you going to do? What are you going to do with that? So not to decide whether they can do it or not. That's obvious in the zoning. There's only a few things we don't allow. Just to touch base that has come in because now things just show up.
Yep. Gus, do you have any thoughts?
In town of Wakefield, our next door neighbor, they have a... I was going to start a business there and I had to go before the planning board. There wasn't a permanent process, but they just wanted to know what you're doing. And we were in the historic district. So the historic district does have some constraints. But that was pretty much it. But they were, you know, I think they do that with anybody who wants to open a business in town.
Yep. From my personal experience in the town that we lived in in Maine before we moved here, I started a business in our home and I had to go in front of the selectmen. And I had to fill out a, you know, a permit. There was no fee involved with it. But it was basically explaining what my business was, what the activities were. And, you know, they had the determination. They actually went and did a site visit to make sure everything was fine. And that was it. So this is one way to handle it.
The historic district over there has different requirements. Because you can only make a sign a certain size. It has to conform to the period because it's the National Historic Register. So for the whole town, I don't know what kind of other constraints you could expect.
Well, it would, as Mr. Schrat said, there would be setbacks that would have to be followed for zoning.
I think the selectmen could... Make the applicant do some things to get their permit. For example, do it in the back 50. Don't put it by a lot line. Have Wall Street parking. I mean, that's the idea of having a permit. You go through it and yes, you can do it, or no, you can't do it. Today, if it's not on our list, by default, you can do it. That's the way our zoning is written today. So if our list is not complete and good, things can appear and we can't stop it.
When you implement a permit process, is there a start and expiration date for this? It can have to be renewed and that sort of thing. Just puts a burden on the owner. It's not a big burden, but, you know.
We didn't go that far. I don't know. I mean, the idea was just to have some... I don't know how many calls we get. And we look at our zoning and you say to the neighbor, it's allowed. It's allowed. It's allowed. Change your zoning, we can change your zoning, but that's it already. Because you can't stop it once it's here. So, I mean, we could have... We could change the zoning, so you have to come to the planning board. Just someone have a review of what's going on and say, hey, some people have 50-acre lots, do it out back. Don't do it in your front yard.
Now, does that fall into the same category of home occupations? Kind of looped, huh?
Home-based businesses.
Yep.
Well, because there are some stipulations in here. Quality of the area, let's see, residential or rural quality of the area does not pose a fire or toxic hazard or produce offensive noise, vibration, smoke, electrical interference, dust, odors of heat. And the homeowner shall be completely contained within the dwelling. Or the HO, home occupation shall be completely contained within the dwelling. That's on page 50 here.
Look, they're home-based businesses. I think there's a...
Prohibited uses of raising livestock for own purpose. But how does this... That kind of counters us trying to be an agricultural community, doesn't it?
I don't know. I think we probably, if we continue this discussion, I think we need to do some research, though. Right? We should look at what Wakefield does for their process. I don't know what Wolf Row has. We usually use Aldini as kind of like a... Similar to community in size. Maybe we should see what those communities are up to. And we can continue the discussion next month. Does that sound fair to everyone?
Just to clarify, yes. Plan is to do away with C and not have non-permitted uses in the language.
Right.
What if, rather than do that, we have the non-permitted uses? You know, two or three are listed and we add line which it says, and other non-permitted uses per the selectman or something like that.
That might just be too open-ended.
Yeah.
Doesn't accomplish...
The objective of C is to make it so that nothing... That anybody looking to do anything other than occupation has to seek approval. And by not having on the list, it's implied that it's okay to do. It's the current problem.
And they could come to the planning board for that review also. Is someone in the town looking at what's going on?
But you... The selectmen, is that your name?
Yes. They're the enforcement body. Yep.
And last question, and then I'll shut up.
No, if you ask all these questions, they're great.
How do people know that they have to come to the selectmen or the planning board?
Yes. That's a good one.
To be in the zoning, we're one.
Yeah. It would probably have to go into the town report once it passes.
But it's like any other permit. How do you know you need a building permit?
It just needs... You need to... It's on you to know.
But I think the term "home-based business" is so big. I think that needs to be a little bit more specific. Especially now, so many people are doing contract work out of their house. So they're considered self-employed. So is that a home-based business? Even if they are doing office work or something like that? So I just think if we're... We just need to be explicit.
Yeah. I mean, it could be outside of the home. It could be, you know, there could be a definition around it, you know, anything.
I just think it could come up just because so many people are working from home. So what does that mean?
Yep.
I think, like, you know, do you have... I mean, I know you don't, but do you know what I mean?
Yes.
Who needs to get a permit?
Well, there's a difference between working from home and having a home-based business.
Yep.
I understand that, but there are people who...
Yeah, who contract.
Who are on a contract work, who are... Yeah.
Yep.
And what about the ownership of the business? Do we need to care about that? So is it the homeowner specifically? Or if I start a business with a buddy of mine from Wolf Row, is that my home-based business or his or hers or whatever?
Oh, really good questions. Which, I think, we need to do some research to uncover what possibilities are.
I mean, I work from home two days a week.
Yes.
And I go to Boston two days a week. So what, do I have to get a permit? And I work for a company that's a Massachusetts company.
But you're an employee.
No, you're an employee, so I'm doing the same thing. So I can...
But if I was a 51% owner of that company, maybe I would.
Yes, but maybe it's a company registered in Massachusetts.
I think if we get too much into that, we're getting too far into the weeds in terms of defining what a person's job is. I think what we should concentrate on is businesses that are going to affect the appearance of town. Or it's, you know, the curb appeal of a certain... That's what I think the issues are in this. And why it should go before the selectmen or the planning board. So that we don't have, you know, sawmill on the road.
So do you include the language just "a visible"? You know, that it's a visible?
Well, I think clerical, office-related, you could be an engineer, you could be a researcher, whatever. I don't think those really have an impact. So I don't know that those would... In my opinion, I don't think it would be necessary to really have them permitted.
Right, but how does everybody know? Like, someone might just not know. And obviously, they can just ask and the question can then be answered. I just feel like if there's a way for us to include language that's very specific about what that means, is what I'm saying, like, is it a visible business that, you know? When we are creating it, if we can make sure to include that specific language, I think that would be helpful down the road.
I agree.
That's it.
I agree with you. And I think it's where we should just do some research before the next meeting in September. And we can all bring in whatever we learn and have a much more informed discussion.
Well, maybe if you keep the terminology very generic, you can apply it to specifics.
We'll have to, as I said, I think we should do some...
You want to make a statement that says, as long as it doesn't impact the, you know, the visual quality, you know, the peacefulness or whatever in the town, then you can do it. And in that way, you have more clarity.
You're limiting a lot of people, yeah.
Right, exactly. I mean...
It's covering a lot.
Very good. We'll move on to the old business. Review proposed zoning ordinance changes. So I hope everybody received the little one pager, which is kind of the start of our zoning ordinance articles for this next election cycle. So certainly, we discussed last month about amending RA 13C, which is our private roads issue, by adding approved private roads. So I'm sure we're all probably in agreement there. The second one was amending zoning ordinance RA 13I, which is the new Cedar Park subdivision that was passed by the voters. I added wording on the end to this. I don't know if this is exactly correct, but I said, unless they abut a right-of-way or pond, lake stream, brookwater course, marsh, or seasonally wet area, thus will follow setback standards defined in 3D.
Yeah, I think that's got to be worked because the way it starts, it says... What's the first few words?
Unless they abut a right-of-way.
Okay, so, Amanda Pierce.
Yep.
Abuts water.
Yes.
Your wrap-up paragraph would say she can't do it because she's going to revert to our original setbacks.
Well, no, I wrote, the setback of structures should be 15 feet or greater from the side and rear lot lines, unless they abut a right-of-way or pond. Maybe I made that... It was one run-on sentence if I wrote it that way.
It's the wording right at the beginning, a lot. For all lots, for all lots.
Yep.
And then you go lots of some words.
Yep.
And if they, unless they abut a right-of-way, all lots, unless they abut a right-of-way...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yes.
Revert to our old zoning.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yes.
The logic is...
So, well, help me out here then. Unless they...
Yeah, that's good.
If side and rear lot lines...
It's more complicated than that. I think you have to specify.
Well...
Unless it infringes on one of the other zoning ordinances?
Unless, if we take away unless they, and say, if side and rear lot lines abut a right-of-way or pond, lake stream, blah, 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 then they'll have to follow setback standards defined in 3D.
I think that's it. You don't want the whole lot rejected.
No, that's a good point. Thank you.
You just want the setbacks from the ones you listed.
Yeah. Good. So it says, the setback of structures shall be 15 feet or greater from the side and rear lot lines. The side and rear lot lines abut a right-of-way or pond, lake stream, water course, marsh, or seasonally wet area, and thus will follow setback standards defined in 3D.
Just, not for the whole lot? Just those?
Follow setbacks there and will follow... Follow setbacks defined in 3D for said lot lines?
You understand.
Yeah. All right. All right. Well, for an agreement with this direction, I might as well send it to the town lawyer to review that.
Well, I can't... I've got a couple more that we can hit, or at least consider. I don't know where to put it on the agenda.
Well, we'll do it under member comments. You, or you want to... Well, I might as well talk about it. We're talking about ordinance changes, so...
So I got the following two from the building inspector.
Okay.
Sheds. Sheds. Our zoning says, all structures have to be 40 feet from a lot line. Then it goes on to define a structure as anything that is attached to the ground. That's where it gets confusing. So sheds, if you bring a shed in, here's where the building inspectors have trouble. You bring a shed in and put it on blocks, you can put it on a lot line. Same shed on piles is not allowed. Because we say one's attached to the ground and one isn't. Same shed delivered by the same company. His suggestion was to make it easier for him and clearer. Sheds greater than a certain size should be at least X feet from a lot line. I mean, he didn't care what the size was, but be clear in what are the requirements? That's the one item.
So, hold on, let me catch... I was catching other notes. So sheds, you're saying if it's 40 feet or greater from the lot line?
Our zoning says, all structure has to be 40 feet from a lot line. That's clear. And in definitions, it defines a structure as anything that is permanently attached to the ground. So a shed comes in on the back of a truck and put it up, you're in the same area.
Yes.
So he's saying, why don't you say sheds greater than 100 feet, 200 feet, whatever you want, have to be X number of feet from a lot line. That's very clear for him. He can say whether it's attached to the ground or not, it's this big, it's allowed there or not.
So even if it's movable, but it's over that size?
That's the problem yesterday. Everything is movable because they come on the back of a truck. That's exactly his problem.
So you're saying we should have a definition for sheds?
Yeah. If you want, that's a feedback.
Yeah. So greater than X square feet have to be X distance from the lot line?
That's clear. Then it doesn't care whether it's attached to the ground, whatever.
What about one of those kind of fake deriders or what do you call them?
The tents?
Tent or...
Yeah.
Tent type of thing.
We have to define shed. His problems are sheds. Sheds are coming in the front of a truck, right on the lot lines. And the neighbor puts them on sonnet tubes and they're not allowed. Get rid of the sonnet tube. So he says, help me with that.
Okay.
The other one I can't even comment on, he says, we have a lot of trouble with seasonal wetland. And whether... I tried to look on the web for that definition. And I don't know whether we mean seasonal wetland is a stream running through a yard that runs in the spring? Is it slop, marshy area? But he needs some help with that area. Seasonal wetlands, is that... What are they and how do they impact our zoning?
I would say it's called a vernal pool or something.
I think, is that a wetland?
Yes.
We tried to put a garage in, in the vernal pool thing, next to it. There's water there, you know, two weeks a year, and it got next to it.
So what would be an additional example? Because that's specifically spring.
Well, somebody might have a, is the example gave me, in the spring, water runs through my yard. I can see a swell runs through. He calls it a wetland, so people can't build it, 75 feet. He said he'd like some help in that area. And I don't have a good solution for that one.
More research.
Well, you could put a time restraint on it, it's too... Much time is wet. It's got to be wet more than three months a year or something.
They do a lot of things with a little zoning sensor.
Yeah, I think we'll have to do some... I mean, there's, in the zoning, there's a whole thing on river management and water management and protection, filling, dredge, and wetlands. For either two sections.
I wanted a web of definitions. And each state has a pretty good set of definitions, but they don't talk about setbacks at all. They just define what seasonal wetlands are. And that's where they leave it.
All right. Well, I think we'll have to do some research. We don't have the answers.
An understanding.
Yeah. Those are two good points, though. Yep. Thank you for bringing those up.
You want some from me?
You're bringing more?
I got to get my notes now. Are we happy with, and I just raised these questions? Are we happy with our definition of ADU? Can I raise that question? Because we're seeing ADUs that are bigger than the primary dwelling. Is bringing that up. Are we happy with, if there are recent subdivisions, with access coming to a lot from any place? Or should it be on the 250 feet of frontage?
Well, I would say the definition of ADU, revisit, we'll add that to the queue of things we need to research. So new members and myself can refamiliarize ourselves with it. Access only on 250 feet of frontage. I don't know if we want to chat about that at all right now, whether or not...
The usual requirement? That's right. The issue was they had their frontage, but they had their access someplace else.
Yes.
We just did pass that down the street?
Yes, that's my point.
Yes.
Do we like that or do we want to... That's exactly the point. How many more of those are there? Don't know. I never can tell. You never can tell.
Well, since you got a driveway permitted on Lyford Road for the small lot.
Yes.
Maybe that should have been the access to a whole piece of property.
Well, there was a button that you have to cross. But...
Oh, I see. I remember that's right.
So if you were to go and do a subdivision and create a road, all of those blocks would have to have 250 feet on the private road?
On the road, on the town, the move road, right? Whatever that means.
Well, I'm just thinking in scale of, say, somebody had 150 acres they wanted to subdivide. And they'd have to put a road through it, in it, to access all the property. By our current definition, everybody would have to have 250 feet of frontage on that newly established road.
That's right.
So really, this would be more focused on, or it'd be more focused on anything that's existing.
Well, you can continue with your scenario, but you don't need a driveway there. You need the 200, or zoning says you need the 250.
Right. Good point.
You don't need a driveway there. And that's what I'm asking. Do we want to say your driveway should come in during your 250?
Yes, Mr. Zachar. Mr. Schrat.
Sorry. If we had something that said the driveway comes in on the major frontage 250 feet plus and leave it open to put in an approved town road on a smaller access point, with state approval for access of the road. That way, in a situation where there is a small piece of land to get access to a larger piece, they can put in a town road, an approved road, town private. But if you're just building a house and putting a driveway in, you come off the 250.
Yep.
I think it's complicated.
Yes.
What's the minimum? What's the minimum, what's the minimum? Like, what is that size right there in order to have access? What is the size of that?
If that, where they put the driveway?
You have to have 250 feet.
The access point that's right here.
Right, it's 135 feet or something.
Oh, I was talking about Simone.
Yeah, I'm wondering, like, what is that, that space is?
It was only, yeah, it was only like 100. I think like 130 was right, it was like 130 feet, something like that. But the subdivided lots.
Right.
Went all the way across to Lightburg Road where they had 1,000 feet.
Exactly, yeah.
So.
So we don't, we don't qualify that? If that was 50 feet, it wouldn't be sufficient for a driveway.
Right. Anything we should have, maybe at least that end, like, maybe a minimum on that end. It should at least be.
That's what I threw out.
Yeah, yeah, I would think.
It, it causes a workaround, because there could be lots in town that have 135 feet of frontage, buildable good lots, and we say no to them. Well, I said. But if they have 250 feet on another road, should they be allowed to come in the 135 where other landowners cannot?
It's 147.
It's not consistent. Just throwing it out there, that's your opportunity, if we don't like what happened, just have it for the thought. And, and the issue with ADUs today are ADU requirements says you have an interior door.
Yeah.
No specification about how big the ADU can be, and we've seen some big ADUs where they have interior doors.
Yes.
Yeah. Some towns say 25% of the primary dwelling, 50%, we say nothing like that, we say interior door.
Interior door from the existing structure, original structure.
Yeah. I'm done.
Five minutes.
Well, if they can manage to stay within all the zoning rules as far as setback and property lines and everything else, I mean, why can't they build a bigger structure than the primary building if they want to?
I don't think that was the intention of ADU definition.
Well, what if the primary owners of the property decide to move into the bigger parcel and the son-in-law who moved in with them lives in their original home?
If my memory serves me right, I think the intention of the ADU was to be a small, or like 800 square feet, something of that nature, that would house like two people. And that, I think it was mostly designed for the southern part of the state where it's more difficult to build and to rent. So that, say, you bought a home when you were young, lived in the main dwelling, rented out the ADU, then as you age, you don't need the house that big, you moved into the ADU and you rented out your house. So I think that was part of the, the logic behind why you put it together, but, yes, sir.
Another thing to consider when they build a big ADU, it's, it's not counted towards our count of low income housing, and it's such that it's a house in town.
Yeah.
What does the ACN stand for, ADU?
Accessory Dwelling Union.
Oh, okay.
Yes, doesn't seem very accessory. All right, well, let's revisit that one next month, be, everybody can read up on it. Access only on 250 foot of frontage, I mean, do we want to debate that some more? What do we want to do with that? Do we want to talk about it next month? I think it's, in my position, it's, it's a fair question to ask. The other part of it is unless we kind of go through and look at all the buildable lots in town, we don't really know what the impact is. So.
Well, if we stipulate the entrance must take place on the major frontage, the 250 frontage.
Yep.
And if they have exceptional circumstances, like this property across the street had.
Yep.
Then they can go in front of the ZBA and look for variance.
There you go. So that would actually, if we were to incorporate that, that would be in our RA 13C that we're already amending, which for approved private roads. We could probably say, you know, well, I don't know if it would go there. I may have to look at the other, or the subdivision regs.
Maybe. We can do some more.
Right. So when we do this, I'll review our zoning and see where, we must have a driveway. I'm pretty sure there's a driveway item on there. All right.
No, where the two houses on the driveway, that's what it says.
You don't need a driveway. All right. All right, we'll revisit this one next month.
If we haven't approved that lot across the street and we change this, would those people now be stuck with a 60-acre parcel that they can't access?
Yeah. Unless they.
Unless they went to the CBA.
Or they, yeah, or they built over the wetlands somehow.
They're mitigated.
I'll comment on that too. Once the board, once the board receives an application, you can't change the zoning that's going to impact that application.
Yeah.
So you said those folks, somebody else? Yes, those folks know because.
Well, now it's okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If they, if we hadn't approved that earlier, and we're starting this now, I'm just saying, they would have been stuck with that. If we passed this tonight, let's say, they, they're never going to prove they would have been stuck with that problem.
Well, yeah, if they hadn't submitted an application.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, once an application hits the board, you can't change the rules.
Can we change the driveway permitting regulations themselves without having, having voted on?
We could change the driveway regulations with a, with a public carrier to adopt it, but if they had already submitted an application, we, you know, they'd have to, we have to apply the rules as they're, that exist as they apply.
Can we just add an article in there that says it must take place in?
Are they, is that part of our zoning?
Yeah, it is. Well, it's a driveway permit.
It may not be part of our zoning.
It's not part of our zoning.
You said in your book, but it's not part of our zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But weren't we hoping that the drive, like, the, weren't we hoping that the driveway was approved prior to us having to vote on it? So is there a way to make that correction, like, once approved, then? Because remember?
I don't.
We, we, we approved the subdivision and then we're like, oh, well, what if it doesn't, what if a driveway doesn't get approved? You know, that was kind of like still left up in the air.
Yeah, I don't, I'm trying to recall, I think the conversation with, with the town lawyer was that we couldn't hold up a subdivision application because of the state driveway regulation.
So that's not something that you could even alter?
Right.
Okay.
There was a state rule.
Okay.
All right, since we're talking about subdivision regulations, I sent out the, the very simple edit to road private and the definitions by adding, and shown on a plan approved by the planning board at the end. That's our intermediate solution. It sounds like we're going to talk about more subdivision things potentially next month, so. We'll hold on this one.
Yes, I, I couldn't think of a scenario where that didn't work.
Right.
Yeah. We got a bunch of private roads in town.
Yep.
But they're not approved by the planning board.
Yeah.
Therefore.
Yep. All right, we'll, we'll hold off on that one for, so it sounds like we're going to add some other subdivision things potentially here. Discuss zoning ordinance list of non-permitted uses. So we had discussed about, you know, we were advised that you could, by the town lawyer, that we could remove all the non-permitted uses, so therefore, everything would have to be, you know, you'd have to go through a home permit system or home based, what we were discussing earlier in order to get approval. Is everybody thinking that's the right direction to go in? Yes?
Yes.
All right, so I think what we'll do is we'll kind of hold off on that one, because it will, I'll just put it down, that we'll remove the non-permitted uses. But we'll, I'll add it as an item in our list of articles. Ground pit inspections. So John tells me Smith Pitt, uh, letter confirmation came back, told me that the address for, that we have on file for Moose Mountain Pit does not, does not, they've got returned, the letter got returned, it's no longer valid. Does the gravel, um, timber or gravel person have the proper address for it?
You have to go to the tax collector.
Tax collector.
They have the proper address for tax bills or communications.
Okay.
The property car does not.
Okay. Can I email the tax collector for that information, or do I have to?
There's a, there's a warrant over her desk that's public information? And you just look at the address of that warrant.
Okay.
Why you have to have a warrant?
Well, she cannot give it to me. She cannot email it to me.
It's in a, it's in a book. I'll show you tomorrow if you want to see it.
Okay. All right. So in that case, nothing's happened. Any member comments? Other than it's darn hot here now. All right, our next scheduled meeting is September 12th at 7:00. This meeting is adjourned, it's 7:42. It'll be tough tomorrow night, you know? It'll be hot here.